I'd like to start the meeting. It's 6:03, we'll call it. So could somebody shut the... If you want to join the meeting, come on. We're about ready to start. Could you shut the door? Okay. Grab yourself a chair. We never know how many people are coming, so let's help yourself around here. Okay, yeah. Doing the distance thing is great. Okay, so we have started the meeting. Are there any adjustments at all to the agenda? Okay. I have one. I'm going to strike the Hardwood Gazette thing, but I do want to talk about it a little bit. I could do that right now, quickly, or we could wait till... There's no decision that's going to be made about this, but I just wanted to share why that is on there. I guess I'll leave it there and do that in a moment.
Making the same one, which one you got here?
You must have an older one. So, yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, so you guys have the first draft of the agenda changed, and I think I...
This is who I was on the form for, which form? We didn't get another one in office.
We sent it to my home meeting, and we didn't send it to work.
Okay, I thought I sent them to your... To the town office, too, after I had the final draft, but, okay.
Don't worry.
All right. So, and then the other... Now I've forgotten what the other adjustment was, but it wasn't major. It's just in the follow-ups. So is there any public comment at all? No? Okay. So I guess we'll approve the bills to the town by signing them after the meeting. And then for the minutes from our last meeting on September 27th, is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so those have been approved. Town clerk's report.
I checked the, oh, the Zone Gazette. I should be saying it was just Lindsey.
Okay.
And Using Citizens World, Hurricane Gazette didn't have a problem with it. Times Argus, it took me one, two, three, four different emails and multiple phone calls before it finally got into the newspaper on the seventh of October.
Okay, yep.
And I have one for the audit proposal. That one is going in Using Citizens World, Hurricane Gazette this week, and I have not heard back from the Times Argus.
Okay, all right. Fine.
I have the quarters up today, and I spent two hours training with Ken Reeves in Greensboro to the town that I'm there with, put the leaning records into the mixers.
Uh-huh. Great. So maybe with your mentioning in that first part of your report about the Times Argus and so the reason... And I'm going to segue right into the Gazette because it kind of relates to what Robin mentioned in her beginning of report. So we had to warn the town plan hearing, which is on October 18th, here, a week from today. And we used the Gazette and the Times Argus as part of the public notice. And the Times Argus, you know, failed to put that notice in for three weeks. So that kind of screws up the warning. So probably the planning commission is meeting tomorrow night. We're probably going to change that date just to be on the safe side because, you know, there are all these steps that need to happen, and that's kind of a chink in one of the steps, noticing the meeting properly. And somebody could call the town on that if they wanted to. It might not hold up in a court hearing, but it might. So, you know, I've talked to VLCT, the lawyer, and they, you know, they always say to err on the side of caution. And that was the suggestion also from Claire Rock, the regional planning commission person that we're working with. So chances are that meeting date will get changed. But, you know, in doing, making these calls, I realized that, you know, the Hardwood Gazette no longer puts out a paper copy. They only do an online version, and in order to get that, you have to subscribe to the Gazette. So it doesn't really seem like a good print paper medium for us to use anymore because it's kind of exclusive. If you aren't a subscriber, you don't get it.
Here's the act for the planning commission, the Zone Gazette. That was $97.
To the Gazette?
To the Gazette. And the one for the audit proposal is $63.
So what we might want to do is kind of not use the Gazette anymore and think of other... We have those other options that you met. Another one that was suggested is the newspaper Seven Days. It's free. It's distributed throughout the area. I don't know if the ads would be free, but the paper itself is free. So we'll maybe think about that and... At least, I don't think the Gazette really, at this point in time, is the greatest place to place anything. So that's what that's all about. That's why I had that on there. And that was, seemed like a good time to bring it up. Any questions at all for Robin with the report? Good? Okay. Just, I don't know everybody that's here this evening, so before you leave, could you give Teagan Martell, our scribe, your name so that we can record that you were here tonight? Thank you. So town treasurers' report.
So over the last two weeks, the gross per payroll was $9,693.53. Accounts payable, $48,106.56. Electronic transfers coming into our checking, there was one for $2,015 even, and that was a land, a current land use that was coming, it's credit to our revenue, our tax revenue. Cash receipts income was $231,445.60. Majority was tax payments. There was library donations, post sales for the library, records restoration, copies at cost, and land recording and vol fees. Delinquent taxes income over the last two weeks was $401.17. I have transferred a rent for our money market, $140,000 even over the last two weeks. I didn't do a transfer today. We were good and clear, and I have more, a large property tax above it tomorrow. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions at all for Brandy? I think I had, actually, I had one. One of the items that I saw on the bills for laptops, did the garage in the town office get new laptops?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Our IT guy, Skip Mercasani, attempted to update my IT home laptop and Greg's. There was no updating. So we got new ones. She works right at home over the weekend. There's no glitches, so being prepared going forward, a little lost, but... So as far as I put an email out to VLCT asking if I could invest the ARPA money for either a 10- or 12-month CD. She indicated that it was fine, but to check with this account for an accounting firm. So I put an email out to an accounting firm, and they said, "Check on VLCT."
Yep, that's not unusual.
So that'd be a no.
I walked into our bank, and since they didn't anticipate all of this money, there is no, I can't invest it with them. I have contacted another bank, and they're supposed to be getting back to me, but even the money market would make that interest, putting it in there. So that's something I would be not doing. We can pull it out if it's in the money market. The rate would be .40, where right now it's only at .30. So I'm still on the works with that one. But my hope is to invest it since we are still in the early stages. I hope they bring up what we're going to do with it.
Okay.
And I know Chance has volunteers now for that committee. I just, maybe we should put him on the agenda for next month, or next meeting.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see the list of people that he has on there. Okay, that's good to know. Okay, anything else? Any other questions for Brandy at all? Well, we'll see how much we make and whether our .4% interest on this.
I'm going to be going on a trip somewhere.
Right. So town highway report.
We finished the grant, uh, grant work upon the camera room. So that should be complete. I think Greg has met me, and everything's good.
Yeah, invoices still. We're still waiting for a few invoices to come in. They'll want it to clear the bank first, so it'll be at least a couple months before I can...
Well, I'm planning on working on the work.
We can close that grant out.
It looks great. It's a nice road up through there.
Yeah, I just drove it today.
Yeah. I, uh, we are in the middle of resurfacing the Wilbur Road with the gravel pre-bob. The Cami Road from the four corners to the bottom of the hill just before you get up to town line has been done. We resurfaced up here. We finished the parking lot to school today. Not the annex, but the school parking lot. In fact, Paul, I'd like to meet with you at some point about my ideas over there for the food shop.
Okay. Just get with me before we leave, and we'll get a time.
Yeah, yeah. East Long. Last meeting, I asked about putting some gravel up there. We put that up there today. The lady that wanted it hired Ronnie Benjamin to use his bobcat to move it up when I was up there to make sure there was no problem with the neighbors and all that stuff. The guy came out, said, "Thank you very much. Helped the roadway." I guess the only other thing I have is, is it Diego or Dango over on the Cami Road?
Uh, Diego.
Diego.
Alex.
Well, he's got some chicken trees by that big area, right? In the travel prior to the road. I stopped asking tonight to move them, and he fired his chainsaw up on back of the way.
Yeah, that's...
That's what he does.
You're lucky he didn't fire something else from what the neighbors...
I was waiting, not hoping.
Yeah.
But we need to lower the load and push them out of the road and make these state...
You might want to have some type of law enforcement person with you.
I don't need law enforcement. I need the okay for you to tell me to clean the road. That's what I need.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable giving you that okay just being aware of past history with this person.
So I need you to take it on myself.
No, you don't. We need to have, call the state police or, and get some kind of...
Now, wait a minute. I'm a road commissioner. I need law enforcement. I think I tell new people.
That's fine. We can call them. I mean, he needs to go do it.
Uh, yeah, but this isn't a situation where... This could become a pretty nasty situation if you do that. And I would like to try to avoid that.
No, I tell you people to call the state police, send a registered letter, whatever you want to do. I don't care what you do. But we can't have them long as we're in the road.
I understand that.
Someone's going to hit them, and it's going to be a bad situation.
I agree 100% with that. But I just, you know, I think I don't want you getting hurt or any of the road crew or just something crazy happening, and the potential for that is...
All right, then I guess that I'm going to throw it back to you. You send them a registered letter and tell them to get it cleaned up, get state police up there, do whatever you want to do.
All right. So what I'm thinking that we should do is we should notify him. I mean, it seems like he would know, but we should send a letter. We could just stick it on his truck, for what that's worth, or send it certified so that we have a record.
I think it's got to be certified.
Right, he's a dyke head.
All right, so we'll send a certified letter. And then when you are ready to do that, we can give them a date that you're going to be there to remove the trees if they haven't been removed.
Okay.
We'll schedule either state police or a game warden or some type of law enforcement to be there to help with that situation. I can call somebody from the Agency of Natural Resources. There's a compliance and enforcement person with, that's been working with Alex for a few years now and is pretty much ready to go to litigation over other stuff that's there with him from the state. He might be able to help out also, but...
Well, there needs to be a bill that goes with it because that loader shouldn't move from South Blueberry all the way over there. Move that stuff and go back to South Blueberry for nothing when there's no need for it.
We can give that person a bill, whether or not we would ever get compensated for it.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll never see anything. Maybe he laws lean on a house.
Right. So does that sound... What are your thoughts?
Yeah, it needs to be done. So I would get the letter out as soon as possible with a date. What I would do is just say, "Needs to be moved by date certain," or "We'll move it."
Right.
And then make sure that he has police with him when he goes.
And make sure that it says, "We will move it," and you're certain.
Right.
Yeah.
Basically, just say it's got to be gone by a date certain and...
Yeah, well, that letter, I can write that letter tomorrow, and I can bring it down to the town office, and we can get it out in the mail tomorrow.
And just have it say, you know, "Or by this date, we'll come with a loader and move it, and you'll have to pay the bill."
Do you have a date in mind, or do you want to just kind of...
Tomorrow.
I asked him, I got to him tonight, and he said that the town was in business. And I said, "Well, I expected Steve Bob doing it, and the next day I don't because it's happened." So, yeah, I had a date on it. Should have happened yesterday.
Yeah. Well, let's say, let's give the letter three days to get there. So...
Today is Monday. A week from today, a week from tomorrow, we'll move them.
Okay, all right. So October 18th.
I agree with that.
First thing in the...
Thinking about using the game warden. We have a new one for this year. We have this information add-on.
Okay, I don't know who would... I'll call the state police.
I'd buy state police go, if they'll go.
Yeah, and I don't know who they'll send, but I'll make that... And I'll make that call tomorrow, too.
You know, I don't want to be a pain in the ass to anybody, but this has been going on all summer.
I know, and it's going to, it goes on all winter, too.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Yeah.
And so someone, somebody's going to set an example and make sure it gets carried out.
Tea tarries the whole street there. If you walk, he'll point his truck at you and drive as fast as he can at you.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is, there is a pretty long ending history that continues with this particular person, so...
No, whatever.
And he shoots it.
It's in the road, and I'm sort of...
He shoots it.
Some side of here.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
It's a character, yeah, because there's somebody that didn't get it. Right up in the road.
It's right in the road, yeah. Okay, so we'll get on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Can I throw an idea out there?
Sure.
I don't know him personally, but I haven't met him up on the mound before. How about, I'll stop a little bit and talk to him.
If you don't mind doing it.
It's an authority there. There's one told by, before...
I didn't tell him. I asked you if you could move...
No, no, I was having a... Right, I get that, but you're still...
Who wants to try it?
If he's firing the telephone right there.
If you've got a decent relationship, you think, "It's worth a try."
I don't know him personally, no, but I'm going to stop that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I don't have a problem.
You know, try to help. I think, you know, the instant, you know, oh, we need to call the cops. That's not being a help.
The cops are there to protect the road crew from being shot.
They cannot get that, but he doesn't look at it like that. And he's not going to look at it like that.
Well...
Like I said, I'll stop that.
If you think it'll work.
Try to talk to him. You never know.
Yeah, no, if you're willing to do that, that's great, and...
Try to do it the simple way before you start bringing authority. Because then it's just going to go sad.
Yeah, well, I think we already tried this other way.
I was cutting wood.
Did I get that?
I pulled up there and said to him, told him who I was and told him that this was a hazard, that we needed to get it out of the road, and that's when he went off on a tail, and it's, well, I don't know what the heck. But we can't have this way in the road. And then he started to chainsaw up. Told me that it was a good day. But I told him that it was a good day.
Yeah, and he may, you know, from your talking with him, maybe in a day or two, he'll move them. And it may just be that initial reaction, but...
He may.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't give him a hair done at all.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chuck.
And we'll send a letter also. We won't not do that.
Try to have a civil conversation with him. You never know.
Yeah? Worth a shot?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Chuck?
The boys are starting to get ready for winter. We geared up. Both trucks been to Chalvoys. So they're all fixed up, ready to go.
Okay. Any questions at all for Chuck from anybody?
Yeah, I was just, wanted to talk about the class four road thing on the north road. For years and years and years, they used to grade that road once a year in the spring and bring in material on the road and spread it, and put it all out on by themselves. We didn't have to ask them to do it. And that is since stop, and they do bring material up. Let me ask, the problem with them bringing material up, they dump it in piles somewhere, and then they have to get another piece of foot and move it around. And, you know, there's unpacked chairs on that lake out there that, you know, should get a little bit of some of the spread on that road and make it go faster. And for a while there, the rocks taken out of it, and they dragged one up here with this guy and dug along them out. I think, probably, by themselves. But it would just be nice to have the town go up there and at least acknowledge the campers that, you know, we know you're out there, and we'll take care of that first grader road that we've only gone on the south camp road as long as I can remember. But that, like I said, that's long since stopped.
Right. You know, if Chuck is willing, maybe you could meet with Chuck up there and just talk about that some more. And if, you know, Chuck is our road commissioner, if he feels that's a project that we could do in the future, you know, we, it's pretty much Chuck's call on that, on whether or not to do that.
Well, wasn't my, my idea to stop doing it years ago?
No. I don't, I don't know why it's...
I don't have an issue with it as long as you can get the grader in there.
Can you get the grader in there?
I was in the, uh, he was in there with a ten-wheeler dump truck.
Oh, okay.
Last...
I mean, if it used to happen, it would just stop. No one, no one...
Well, they won't, they won't grade Blueberry Hill anymore. And the story I got is right here.
I, I know the story to that from our former road foreman who, I guess, slid down backwards in the winter trying to push back the snowbanks on Blueberry Hill. And I think that was the end of the grading on Blueberry Hill. But that doesn't mean that it can't...
And it seems to be everywhere on class four. The argument I get every time I mention doing some of the class four road, the only thing they need to take care of is harvest and regars.
Well, that's legally what we're...
Responsible for.
Responsible. And actually, now we're responsible for erosion, too. But if, we used to have, and we still do have, a class four budget that allowed us to work on particular roads, class four roads, if they were needed. I, that budget, you know, there was, I think it's like $3,500 every year is budgeted for that. So there's always that possibility. However, you know, the fact that the grading on the class four roads may have been stopped, it was before my time that that decision was made, and I've been on the select board now for eight years. So if...
Tell them to draw it up.
Well, we, we need to plan it out. We have a 30, if we have, if we're going to have $3,500 in the budget, we can't do every, go and do every class four road in one year. So we need to kind of come up with a plan. Do we want to do the north road to the South Grove Camp Road next summer? Then we can budget and plan on that, and...
What about the north camp road? It used to be down to the north camp road.
Say they get to it?
North camp road, right where the stop sign is.
Right. Yeah, I mean...
I'm sorry, up by East Long?
Yeah. You won't pass South Camp Road.
Where Woolsey's, are you Woolsey's? All right.
The class four road, as far as I know, stops at the stop sign.
No, actually, it goes all the way through to the Cabot Town Line.
If that point, if that one all the way through, because I turned around and drove like two thousand with my dump truck, and they put, they had to get in there.
So this kind of, I mean, I don't want to segue into class four roads yet, but let's use this north road as an example. So it goes, there's the, the north road into some camps, and then there's the south road in. And then the road gets, the class four road gets significantly more primitive.
From the stop sign through to Coates Pond is basically a trail.
Right, it's, it's basically a trail, and then the road actually splits. There's a Y, and the actual road goes to the right. And right now, somebody has a cable across that road on either side of their property.
Which makes it impossible for us to work with it.
And then the rest of the road down to the Cabot Line. Cabot has thrown up the road from Coates Pond. It's not a town road anymore. So to the Cabot Line, that road was totally trashed by a logger up five or six years ago. There's tops of trees, the road's all chewed up. You can't, you can hardly even walk on it.
That part of the road belongs to that logger.
No, that's a class four road. That's a town road. It doesn't belong to him. He owns the property around it, but he doesn't own the road.
No, but when the class four road, the lift up is all pushed through there, where the campers are, that's the road that, that had to be named any for...
I, I agree.
That's because it's actually not part of our designated road.
Right, the other road that has been somewhat maintained, I don't know whether that's EB Hyde that originally built that road or who actually did it. It does go into camps on Nichols Pond, too.
Right, yes.
So...
So that is a designated road. The road that you're talking about actually is not designated. So we can, we can, we can work with that.
So where is the class four road actually stopped?
At the Cabot Town Line. By Johnny George's old sugar house, basically.
Okay.
That's where it stops.
So, and I'd have to get out a map and to find, there's no marker for a town line either.
The map, we don't down there. It should be more restricted to...
Right, yeah. It does go straight through. Right, you'd be pretty challenged to get through the Cabot part at this point.
Because it doesn't exist anymore.
No, it does exist, but it's a walking trail.
Last spring, when I was over in New Hope, I picked up. I drove right down to the King of, on the end of Nichols Pond. I thought it was pretty good road.
Right.
Except for that stretch that we fixed today.
Right. The road that goes down to East Long is a private road, and it now has a gate on it.
That's a gate.
Now, that's owned by EB Hyde, and they're the ones that maintain that road. The road from where these, this young, these young folks are living, trying to homestead, that new road, I don't know who built it, but it's been maintained by the two or three camp owners that live on the backside of Nichols Pond.
That's where we stopped the neighbor, where the, where the young people took that little handle.
Yeah, yeah.
We pulled the rock out of the road there and put a left hand, and then filled the stop spot out through back towards Woolsey's.
Yeah, so if you... So Chuck, if you thought that next summer, that would be a project for the road crew to work on the north road, it would be good for the select board to have a sense of what would that cost the town so that we can budget for it? We need to, you know, we need to be careful about budgeting for the future projects in, you know, before, before the fact rather than after. And, you know, we could either go with the $3,500 that we appropriate. We could appropriate more if it seemed, but...
Well, I'm not too sure if these folks are coming in and want some action, but there's going to be other ones.
Well, that's, that's...
They're bothering out, and we won't refer.
That's the can of worms, so, but, but that's why we would probably kind of plan this out a little bit. And so other people that come, put them on the list, and we'll kind of look at... And so other people that come, put them on the list and, and we'll kind of look at what we can do on some of these class four roads. Camp owners, um, you know, people, people who build on a class four road um, really build with the understanding that the town isn't going to maintain it unless, um, you know, unless there are a significant number of people that start living along it and, and they petition to change the road from class four to class three where the town would basically maintain it in winter plow except.
Well, I believe they understand that and it's stacked, but they don't ask.
I understand that, yeah. But that's part, that's one of the other dilemmas that the town comes up with, um, with these, with the class four roads.
Okay. Yeah, I, when I was a kid, I worked for the town and tail the grader, tell them something about the road. And we always went east, we went to Nichols.
Yep. And I don't know why it, why it stopped, to be honest with you.
I don't either.
Um, but maybe it's.
To me like they're here and I might as well talk to them and see what we can do if it, I don't, I don't ever remember making a decision not to hit.
Did a lot of water buyers at the four or something?
Once a year.
It was a four or something.
Did a lot of water buyers, they were requiring culverts.
I have, well.
Yeah, even if they just brush it off.
Just, just as we hear.
It doesn't sound like they're wanting to move, you know, reading up the road. It's just they'd like it smoothed out a little bit.
We're not really looking for a super highway thing. You know, we don't want a road that, you know, too lengthy. All we want is roads, you know, graded once a year, smooth.
How do you even grade your water bear?
Well, I mean, yeah, we don't have water bear roads on that part of the road.
Right. So I, so I'm sorry Chuck, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second. You guys want a steady road, right?
What's that?
You want a steady road?
Yeah.
So you want some, no washouts, right? No washouts?
Right.
So you can't do it without culverts?
Well, yeah, I'm really good at that.
Okay, so we gotta do that.
Um, the particular road I'm talking about, moose, eat that.
Don't promise too much. I'm just asking.
We're always talking about barely, or South Camp Road turned out and there isn't any water bears.
Okay.
So grade that once a year.
So we can grade that.
The other particular water bears are, I guess, I agree, you wouldn't have to put culverts.
We gotta do something.
Like Chuck said, you can't grade a water bear.
Was that the steep downhill section before you get to the south road?
Yeah, just before you get to Moose's Camp.
Yeah.
So I think that the, the thing is that if you guys can tell us, give us a sense of what we need to do to make that road more maintainable, to get back to something that we had in the past, that might actually work.
Yeah.
But right now, we have no idea about how much, how much and how far we want to really go and what grade of road we want to really do. If we have a sense of that, we can make it work.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But we got, we, we gotta go out and we gotta check it out.
Yeah.
You know, so we understand your position? Is that fair enough?
I mean, as far as culverts go, I mean, I guess that would be, you know, Chuck and Moose would have to get together.
I, I think we'd have to do something, but it's not gonna happen. We know it's not gonna happen this year. So, right?
Well, we all have.
And it will all happen next year, we have a seventy-five.
No, and that's, and, and.
You can get with them and just get back to us on what you think it's gonna cost to be able to grade it once a year.
Right. So we gotta start with that.
All the rest of the class four road still over there?
No, we're starting here.
All right.
When you say the south road is out, that means back to the Cabot Road?
Yes. Well, yeah, most of that's already done.
Right.
Yeah.
Bottom of the hill is already done.
Yeah, that's class three.
That's class three.
Class, class three, yeah.
Back to the Cabot Road if you want graded again. Is that what you're saying?
So there is class three, put it in the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
Bottom of the hill, on the north road up around.
Chuck, do you know why it's class three down there? Why do we?
Why do we, why do we call it?
Why, why class three there and then class, class four?
Yeah, where's, where's that?
There's no house there. Or there used to be a house there.
There's, there's. There are people that go down in there.
Yeah.
Cause there's no house, there's no structure.
But why, why?
There used to be a fire in Hollow, man, and when that happened, it was.
Yeah. That was a long time ago. You're right.
And I don't, I have no idea if it was in Kansas, class three.
Okay. Just, just curious. I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to change anything, but I'm just always wondering why.
I, yeah.
Why that class of road goes to nowhere.
Me too. In fact, the part of the class three road this year, we resurfaced. I'm hoping people notice that. Not necessarily, it's all right, they all were open.
They just wish it kept going, that's all. It didn't go far enough, come on.
You made it too good.
Hey, um, so it sounds like you're in charge of the, um, I'm, um, you're in charge of like the, you know, the technical details, the power mix done. And then you guys have, especially you, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting. You have a bunch of questions you want to answer before he can, who, who has the final approval?
Chuck is our road commissioner.
We have the two free notes.
We have, we have the final approval.
I'm one favorite. Rock, don't tell them what's up and tell them what it means. I'm the favorite, tell them what they're right doing.
Is, is this.
The select board has the final approval for the money spent.
We gotta approve funds, so.
We gotta approve it.
We don't want them getting into a twenty, thirty thousand.
You guys have questions that he doesn't know about? Like who should we talk to?
You should talk to Chuck, talk to Chuck.
He has all the questions.
Yeah, he would answer. What we want to do is, well.
I may not have all the answers, but I'll pitch them.
But we want is, he's gonna say, here's the scope of work and here's how much I think it's gonna cost.
And then it's gonna come to us as a board.
Okay.
If it's simply grading, that's easy, but if you gotta put.
If it's within the highway budget, it's easy. Chuck needs to just check it.
It's more road to do.
The bottom of the hill off of the South Camp Road, they could use.
A lot.
Four to six loads of gravel before we leave home. So.
That's the kind of, he needs to tell us about what it's gonna cost. Cause we've also gotta be, as soon as we start repairing a class four, we're gonna have four, three other class four road people showing up.
There are a lot of other class four.
Not that that's gonna, not to change my mind, but we gotta be aware, cause they're gonna be fixing our road after not fixing my road.
We won't tell them.
You won't, you won't need to tell anybody. People will know.
Cause then we just gotta be careful, cause we can add a lot of expense.
But, but here's the thing, and this is coming from just one of your select persons and having consulted with these guys. So this is coming from me. If you have a class four road that you think was converted from class three to class four and you don't know why, we'd like to know.
That's not the case there.
Not at all.
It just, what, what, what had happened before is once a year, they'd run through and just grade it and smooth it up and it stopped for some reason.
And the thing is, something to me, I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, Chuck, you're.
You may want to keep in mind that we may not get that the whole way in one year. It could take two or three years before we get out through there and get it the way it ought to be and ditches and water buyers and culverts and, yeah. Cause when you start out with a construction like that, it starts already to about a hundred fifty bucks a foot.
Yeah.
We don't want to have the one and one fifty dollars.
But I'll tell you, you know, we, we can work out a little bit of time and make a big difference, but it's, yeah. Not like we're gonna jump right in there and go.
Well, like, I, you know, love to see where this comes in, but there's not for us to hide any equipment and stuff and like, we're willing to work with it, you know, like get that all stretched the funds out, let it, you know, let us do the whole thing. And see where we, where we can get to.
Mm-hmm. Well, why don't you guys meet with Chuck, um, either next spring? Chuck's not gonna be around that much longer.
Either this fall.
Yeah, we gotta meet this fall.
Okay.
Just.
If you wanna plan the budget.
For this year.
Okay, all right. Um, and.
Hey Chuck, can you pull me in on that?
What's that?
Can you pull me in on those conversations?
Yeah.
Help Chris in.
So we'll go, we'll go from there. Does that sound okay? And we'll, we'll, we'll plan on doing something next summer. Um, but what that will be is we'll, you know, we'll wait until Chuck has a look at it and talks with you guys.
Oh, it's up there in the ass and I'm pretty well, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay.
I figured you'd want.
I like it, I like it. All right. So, um, I just put class four roads on the town highway report agenda, um, just to bring up, um, uh, another discussion. Um, it's, and just, this is just to plant a seed for discussion. I don't really want to get into it tonight. Um, we're already kind of over, past our time. When I first came on the select board, there were different class four roads. Um, there's a class four road off Route fourteen down here. Just before you get to Harbburg where we had to repair a bridge. It costs the town about fifteen thousand dollars, I think. And it basically goes to one home. It's like somebody's driveway, but it's still classified as a cl- town class four road. Um, there are other class four roads that, um, really no one can drive on anymore. Um, I'm thinking of, um, what's called affectionately the Ho Chi Minh Trail. Um, that's a town class four road. Goes all the way from County Road up over the Woodbury Mountain Range and down, um, onto Woodbury Mountain Road. Um, so there are some roads that, you know, I kind of wonder, do we wanna? And, and when you do this, it opens up a big can of worms. People get really upset. So, and I really, you know, we talked about it a little bit when I first was on the select board and it just seemed like it was a lot of effort and, um, with a lot of people getting upset, it didn't really seem worth trying to do anything about it. But, but I'd like, uh, my other select board members and Chuck to think about some of these roads in town that are classified as a class four road that basically go to one house. Um, other roads that are totally impossible to drive unless you have a, an ATV or, um, you know, a mud bogging rig. Um, and just, do we want to maintain, do we want to continue to keep them as class four roads? So that's, I don't really even want to discuss it tonight, but I'd like people to maybe just think about that. And if we do want to discuss it, then we can start putting it on the agenda. Um, okay. It's definitely a hot button topic.
Yeah, it's probably more trouble than it's worth.
Well, it's more trouble than it's worth, probably. Yeah, I agree. So, um, I, moving on to the next thing that I tagged on the town harbor report, I did play around, um, with some figures for the truck replacement, trying to come up with a sense of how are we gonna do this in, to the future? Um, there are some extra copies of this if anybody wants one to look at. There aren't a lot. Um, anybody want, want to look at? Let's see, I have three of them, I think.
You got all of them?
Sure.
I, I met with Brandy and she helped me come up with the, the numbers that are here. And so I wanted to just start out at the top. Um, and this is just, um, this is my thinking about it. I'm not trying to advocate for anything. Uh, we do, um, I think we do have to try to come up with a plan for replacing these, the two big plow trucks, um, into the future. So right at the moment on our, the due to, um, due from, um, listing for reserve funds, right now there's sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars in the, what's called the Highway Equipment Replacement Fund, the HERF. And that's at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, which was, uh, June thirtieth this, this year. Um, so right now we're in fiscal twenty-two. Um, so Brandy at the, um, right around this time of year, November first roughly, um, she will take the ninety thousand dollar appropriation that is in our budget every year for this fund. And she will take from that the payments that we, that we make for any equipment that we have, um, outstanding that we need to pay for. And at this point, that's the low pro and the bucket loader. So, um, so what I've done is looked at FY twenty-two, um, and at the end of FY twenty-two, we will have a hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars in that HERF fund. Um, at the end of the next year, um, again, putting in the remainder from making those two payments, fiscal year twenty-three, which is the last year that we'll be paying for the bucket loader, we will be, we'll have two hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. I have no idea what a truck costs nowadays. But if it was around two hundred thousand dollars, theoretically, we could replace one of the plow trucks in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, we would acquire it, um, and then make that payment, um, November first. Kind of keep those same payment schedule. We've kind of worked that out. So, but that would bring our, the HERF fund, I, you know, for sake of discussion, it would pretty much empty it out. And then two hundred and four thousand dollars may not be enough. But let's say it just flattened it right out and then we would start over again. We would no longer be paying for the bucket loader, but we'd still be paying for the low pro. So each year we would be adding, uh, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and two dollars to the Highway Equipment Relief Fund. And in three years, um, still making, two years of those will be payments to finish up paying for the low pro. Um, but in three years, we would, um, uh, get to the point where we would have two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars. So theoretically, we could purchase the second truck then. Um, both of these truck purchases would be free and clear. No loans, no interest rates. And then, uh, having done that and having paid off the low pro, we would start putting away a significant amount of money each year towards whatever else we wanted to buy. Or we could redo the ratios and put less in. But that's kind, this is.
Three rigs you have to replace.
Yeah, so we would be having to replace the low pro. So.
You should have five years between in Canada.
Right.
Uh-huh. Okay, well then we would have plenty of money by five years if you wanted to do it. Yes.
Well, you ain't got money enough to pay for one yet.
Well, I don't know how much it costs for them right of the money.
Well, they were around, they were around two forty the last time we checked.
Yeah, now back there around two eighty, it's two ninety now, boy.
All right. Well, that's the thing. I don't know how much they cost. Uh, that's not my world, knowing how much a plow car costs.
Help us out.
So what I'm saying, we need to have money enough to buy them, buy them.
Okay, so do you think when, uh, with the fiscal year twenty-four, we would have two hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
Then, you'd have one less.
Okay, so if we waited one more year, um.
Yeah.
So if, yeah, if we waited, if we ordered next summer, if we ordered a truck next summer, it would take a year to come in.
Yeah.
We'd have all the money to pay for it.
I'm thinking that's what you need to do.
Okay, well that's.
You need to plan it for the next one, five year later.
What about?
We need to get them.
We gotta get them separated, cause we, they're, they're one year apart right now and you can't spend a quarter million dollars two years in a row. Yeah, there'll be a trade in value.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Get some money back, but not, not a ton.
Well, we just have to make it record, say, then John Boys, well, who member, kept right up in good shape. Uh, you might be surprised what you get. You would get what you really like them, but you might be surprised what you get.
Yeah.
Cause that second truck would have to last.
Five years.
Pretty old.
Well, it's already.
Yeah, but you know what? The whole thing we're talking about, bringing this is that it'd be ninety-nine thousand miles.
I hear you.
Them trucks are designed for a million miles when they're built.
Yeah, I agree. So if we order next summer, we'd get it the following summer.
Spring.
Order it in the spring.
Well, I said the spring.
Okay. Yeah, I just want us to kind of come up with a plan. That's all, that's, um.
So we'll plan for next.
So, yeah, so we'll plan for next year and that means that we would, um, pay for it in fiscal year twenty-four. Um, if we can make that kind of arrangement with, uh, whoever we're gonna buy it from.
And you should put a lot of the money for it.
We would, yeah, by the time it gets here, for sure.
We would have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
That was the plan.
Yeah. So, and then. Okay. And then.
I just can't see the town paying that much interest on the truck.
No, that's, that's, that's the whole point in, that's the whole point in this discussion.
Trying to avoid all of those payments.
So if we, if we went out another, if we went out another five years, um, we would have more than enough.
You've got two years tied up in this already on the next truck.
Not yet.
Next year, this year and next year, then you start saving money for the next one and in four years, you'll want to have it.
Right, cause our payments will be gone. Yeah, we'll have it.
Yeah.
And then the two ten dollars will be five years back.
Mm-hmm.
The low pro, it pops up and we're gonna don't know anything else.
Right. So we can keep that going for quite a while.
Yeah.
So that sounds like maybe we have a tentative plan.
Yeah, order next.
Order next year, pay for it.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay, all right. Let's, um, so.
I wrote it right on the page.
Probably by the time we get to fiscal year twenty-seven, I don't think I'll be on the select board anymore.
It won't be any more problematic anymore. So we'll have left a nice setup for somebody.
We'll worry about that later.
Hopefully they stick with you.
Okay, so.
That's what the talk comes in the afternoon.
Yep, it won't be me, it'll be somebody.
So this is great. We sort of have a plan. Let's kind of, we'll document this somehow so it's in public memory, cause I'm not gonna be on the select board.
Spreadsheet, put it right in the computer.
Yeah.
There you go.
The catch is, is keeping future select board members to not play around with the HERF appropriation.
They're not putting the money in the. They're not putting the money in the HERF. That's where we ended up with all these loans, was shorting the HERF.
That's what happened in the past.
Well, in a rough tuition, you couldn't run and drive a standard company.
Because it's tempting not to put the money in, but you're going to pay triple that when you put it back eventually.
With interest.
Yep.
Okay. So I will make a summary of our plan, and we'll look at it at our next Select Board meeting and prove it, for what that's worth.
At least it'll be there for...
Can I talk to the prices? Can I talk to the prices?
Yeah, let's get some prices, yeah. That would be good.
You'll let Chuck do it.
Okay. You guys come up with some prices for us, so that we can factor it into this thing and make sure it's going to work.
It won't bother me, but I don't want to do anything for it.
Because like going out to bid and stuff, we didn't do that the last couple purchases.
Right, no, we will go out to bid. But having, having some figures from you guys, from the road crew would help. And then we can plug those into this scenario that we're thinking is a plan and make sure it's going to work. Okay, any other questions about that discussion, from anybody?
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Why is the sensitivity to interest, is there, must be a behavior sensitivity?
Paying the bank for something.
Paying the bank for something.
Thousands of dollars.
That's the way I live my life too, but I'm just saying like, with interest rates so low, why wouldn't you take advantage of interest rates?
I think it's just the general curmudgeon-ness of, and the fact that it was...
Well, paying, basically a third again. The last two trucks, we're paying for a third of a truck.
It's not as, it's not as 0% interest rate when you're part of that kind of money.
Exactly, you're paying on a low pro and a bucket loader for four years, and all of a sudden, it turns back.
Yeah, because when I got here, I'm not blaming anybody, but we had 100 and, 100 and some thousand in payments.
116,000.
116,000 in truck payments a year, and that just was not cool, I didn't think.
Brandy probably has a...
You don't want your taxes to go up, I'll bet you.
Yeah, sorry, no. Just curious, I wanted to know what the sensitivity was to the interest.
That's wrong.
Yeah, that's why, because it just gets high, lots of taxes, a lot of money.
So right now, the low pro, it's seven years that we're paying on this.
Yeah.
And what's the percentage rate interest?
Probably 1.5%, 2%. Most of the municipal stuff is 1.5%, 2% right now.
But it's not a great seven years that we're paying on it.
So it's, it's just paying more for it. If we can kind of put our pennies away and buy it outright.
Instead of buying a truck, you're buying a truck a half. You didn't get no use out of that half.
Unless it's out of the money, but, yeah, okay.
I like your guys' idea, it's great.
And that was always, that was, that was always what was done historically. But what happens is, is a tendency to say, well, you won't want to put the $90,000 in the fund. We can lower the tax rate by not doing it, and then you end up paying a lot more, you just don't feel it.
And sure, if the money's not hanging around, it's going to get used for something else.
Right, it's all, the budget is a budget, it's an estimate. Always things that you get to store, if we're over on this, over on that.
So, but we purposely put this money in the HERF, which means we can carry the money forward, but it can't be spent on anything else but highway equipment.
So that was our, that was our goal.
Except when Select Board members...
Yeah, well, that was legal.
Didn't mess with it.
But you cannot put the money in, but once it's in there, you can't use it except for the per, because the voters approved that fund. Right. Otherwise, we're not allowed to have a savings account.
So that's money that's tucked away for specifically this purpose.
And it was voted on by the town to do so.
And the town, and the town agreed.
Yep.
So it's not on us. It's on you guys.
So we're just trying to get back on that road. We just got to pay for what we bought first.
So, anything else on that? Move on? Okay, yeah, no, it was a good discussion.
Excellent discussion.
So, the horses on Cabot Hill, I drove by there today. They're all within their fence grazing happily.
I haven't heard any complaints.
I haven't heard any complaints, I haven't heard from Kim Silk.
Well, the thing is, is that she put a trailer there and put the bell hams in wherever the horses. They're developing the bolts or a hatch.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's been no issue, so...
That's a trick for the animals, he developed one for the town.
So maybe that trick has been learned.
Hold on.
He's hard to use, I know.
I'm pleased that there hasn't been a problem.
Right, me too, yeah.
It seemed like it was snowballing.
Winter's going to be different.
Well, they're leaving for the winter.
The person said that they would be boarding the horses over the winter. Okay, so just, I guess the fact that there hasn't been any incidences, we'll just move on from that one. So the Town Hall, we did get an estimate for the removal of the bats in the attic above us, and also for the removal of the, their droppings, wano, from the Eliminator Pest and Property Center.
Can I have the wano?
You might be able to.
If they remove it, like, how can you...
Hey, I don't know how you're going to do it.
People sell it in little bag states for fertilizer, yeah. There, there are, there are issues with some of the paint.
Okay.
So we'd have to be careful.
Is there maybe a combination of...
We have to be careful about that. Some of the paint?
But we have lead paint here.
We have lead paint in this building.
Which you may not want.
Yeah, I don't know how much we have. That's in the paint. The attic isn't painted at all.
Yeah.
So what is the amount, I read it.
So, yeah, so...
It's notably small.
So, yeah, it's very reasonable, which is amazing. So to exclude the bats, which would mean it's pretty much the fascia, where the roof edge and the fascia meet up here, it's all open. So they would seal the entry points with a one-way exits, so the bats can go out and then can't come back in. And then, once there's a certain time period that they let them get out, and then they'll come back in and basically seal up where the, these one-way cones are, and then seal up...
Robin got locked out. We don't want any. I thought it was the car warranty guys.
They'll seal up how the bats are getting in for, and they'll guarantee it for one year. When I, the technician came, you know, he said the real, that they can do a temporary fix of that, but the real fix is to replace the roof, not the south side, that's fine, the north side, and to redo the fascia. That would be the permanent fix for keeping the bats out. So, and then to come up and, to clean out the bat droppings. So there, for the exclusion of the bats and the sealing of the areas where the bats are getting in, they would charge us $1,500 for that. And for, to come and clean up the droppings, they would charge us $950 for a total of $2,450.
Wow, let's do it.
So, sounds pretty reasonable to me.
I'll make that as a motion.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you, actually, I should have asked, is there any, is there any discussion?
You want to go do it? Ah, you want to do it cheaper?
No, no, I want to be, I want you to follow up on it and get it sealed permanently.
Right.
Yes, yeah, that's another, that's another, the next step.
Yeah, I know, but...
That's the next step.
Yeah, we don't want to drop the ball.
Right, if you're going to do it, if you're going to go to the expense bonus, then we should fix it so it ain't coming back.
Yeah.
Which that could be a pretty easy project.
That could be a pretty easy project.
Just going to get carpeted up there to replace the wood.
Right.
And then, and then what'll happen in these sort of beginning plans for renovating the Town Hall, you know, according to the, this sort of ad hoc committee with the Town Hall, is that that would allow a structural architect, engineer to come in and do an assessment of what might be needed to renovate the Town Hall, without having to worry about the toxicity of the bat droppings. So that'll be a next step, and obviously, priority would be to, to replace that part of the roof. Because if you look, the north side, no rust at all, the fascia is nice and tight. You look on the, south side, yeah. You look on the north side, the roofing is all rusted, and the fascia is kind of warped and pulling apart. So it seems pretty obvious that this half of the roof got fixed, but not the other half. At some point in the past, I have no idea when. Okay, so is there any, any other discussion? I should have asked for more discussion before we voted on it, but any... No discussion, okay, so that's a done deal. So, the next item on the agenda is revisit the Church Street Storm Water Mitigation Project. And let me just give you an explanation of why that is on the agenda, because we really have already made a decision. And basically, Grace Vincent, the Regional Planning Commission staff, who was with us when Chris came and gave his presentation, she is being pressured a little bit from the Mount Askutney Regional Planning Commission, which is the dole out of the funds for these design projects of... They want, they want the town, and basically, I'm just going to read this. This is what they wanted the town to know as far as the implementation, if we changed our mind and decided to put some type of storm water mitigation thing across the road here. So they're, they wanted us to know that the town is welcome to apply for 100% of the funding necessary to implement the project. There is no match requirement for non-MS4 projects. And I'm sorry, I don't know what an MS4 project is. I think it's when it's below a big project. Anyway, as we discussed, it is a competitive grant process, so we cannot be certain the project will get funded. If the project is not funded, they can simply apply for funding again. So we did apply for implementation if we decided that we wanted to do this. And we got turned, we didn't get awarded, we could apply again. In addition, the town will not be obligated to pay for implementation out of pocket in the event that grant funding is not awarded. So if we did have a design done with a 100%, with a plan, and we couldn't get any funding, there's no obligation that the town has to do the implementation. So I did talk to Grace about this, you know, she's kind of in the middle. They're kind of pressuring her to ask us to rethink, rediscuss this, or...
Oh, ready.
And I told her that I didn't think that I wanted to change my mind, and I didn't think that...
There's just, what I saw, even the engineer said it was such a minuscule amount of impact, that it's just not worth your money. I don't care whose money it is, it's still taxpayer money.
I would, I would raise the question, why is she being pressured so much?
Because they, you see, this planning commission received a pot of money to spend. Yeah, they had to spend it, they had, they had to account for it, so...
It was such a low, like, we were going to spend a lot of money to like, save 100 pounds of potential.
It wasn't a functional project.
And it was not functional.
And Grace understands the cost-effectiveness aspect. It really wasn't cost-effective, it was a waste of, whether it's state money or town money.
That was my opinion at first, it just wasn't worth it.
Right.
Right, wherever the money comes from, it's not worth it. It's all the same money.
However, if, I mean, if we, if we take it to the different, to a next level, if we were to remove most of what we know of what is the central part of town, and buy out the houses, and return this to a normal floodplain, then it's an efficient project.
But they're not going to give us that much money.
We're talking about something that is not reasonable, right?
Right. Right, that's why we stopped.
Till we stopped.
It just got, it just wasn't worth it.
It just became on...
Because it's like he said, to fix the problem, you'd have to buy all the houses and turn it back into a mud flat, and that's not going to happen, so...
But we're, let the beaver have it.
No.
But we have to admit the fact that most of our structures right here are built in an active floodplain.
Right.
Right. That's a place that is going to flood.
Yep.
Yep.
So if we accept that, then all of this infrastructure stuff is kind of silly. Because we're built in a place that is supposed to flood on a regular basis.
And it does.
And it does. It's proven over and over, yes. History is, there's no mystery, right? No mystery anymore.
There's no mystery.
And it's all the hundred years started with it.
No, it was happening every couple of years.
So I, we had done our due diligence by...
We're still no, you and everybody's still no.
We're still no, and...
We revisited it.
It's big now.
There's one thing in our family, this new silt pond we put over here on Valley Lake Road is working perfect.
I like, I like your engineering.
It keeps all the water in that silt pond until it has a chance to settle out and evaporate. Not over one dump.
And that's what we're going to do at the end of Church Street eventually, right, right there in Marneys.
Well, yeah, and if we did that, that's, that's another part of this conversation. Chances are this, I know Chris had, I think he sent us some stuff about that, but that was probably something that we would just do on our own. I don't, I don't see...
You spoke to Ronnie, and he was okay with it, I'm in favor.
All were good.
Yeah, I'm in favor of doing it when you can do it.
I wouldn't say that it'll happen this fall.
Whenever it happens, just...
Nope.
Hope it doesn't happen this fall.
You guys have done enough.
You've done plenty of work.
We're good here.
So, okay, so I will let Grace know this, and she pretty much knew what the answer would be anyway. She just said that she would contact us again to ask us to rethink it. And we did, and we pretty much came up with the same thoughts from before. So I will probably send her the minutes from the first meeting where we discussed this, and these minutes. So she has some backup from what the town discussed, and they'll have to find somewhere else to spend the money, I guess.
Well, we can find a place for them to spend the money.
Well, they won't give it to us unless...
They won't give it on the stuff you really need.
Yeah, right. So, anything else about that at all, from anybody who's here? All right. Okay. So Regional Emergency Management Committee appointment. So this, and Paul, you probably know already all about this, but this is a new committee that the legislature felt we should be a part of. It's a Regional Emergency Management Committee. So it would be a bunch of other towns. They would like two representatives from Woodbury. Chance Pad, who is our Emergency Management Director, is automatically one of those two. And then they would like somebody else from the emergency unit of town, which basically is the fire department, to find another person to be the rep. And we have until November 1st.
Okay, let me talk, let me...
Okay. So...
What's it called again? Regional Emergency?
Yeah, I'll give you the whole thing if you want.
Well, I think I have it on the computer.
Yeah, they're on the computer, yeah. Yeah, what is it called? Regional Emergency Management Committee.
What do we, what do they have?
It's more meetings you get to go to to talk about.
What do they have to have for the requirements?
They have to be part of the Emergency Respot Community.
We can make in honorary member.
So they just have to have what?
They have...
Or do they have to be part of something here?
It must be...
So if they're an EMT somewhere else?
They must be a representative of the local EMS community.
That doesn't mean anything.
Well, they have to be, I don't know what EMS...
Have you got someone in mind?
I don't have anyone in mind.
Nobody, Chris does.
I have like three or four in mind.
Talk to me afterwards, we'll see what we can do.
So, I mean, if they're not part of the fire department, but they're...
If they have some knowledge and skill in this area.
Yeah, if they're certified, we'd like to have them.
Should be some diversity in all.
Right.
People looking at, I mean...
Yeah, because I can't go to any more meetings.
No, I was, I was thinking of someone else, I was thinking about, on the fire department who does respond to emergency calls.
So there's that, well, if Chris wants to talk to you, we'll get together and we'll have a name for the next meeting.
So November 1st is, is the deadline. So maybe if we could have that name, that we could appoint them at the next Select Board meeting, that would be, that's our deadline to have a name. That'll be...
And you got to go to the meetings, they're not going to pay you or give you mileage either.
Right, you know, actually, I sent an email, I, kind of, in a sort of a snickering email, I sent to our two reps, and one of them, David Yagivoni, is actually looking into that.
Yeah, because they require all this stuff, and nobody pays you a dime, you get to burn your gas to drive for thirty minutes to go somewhere.
That's the real kicker with these things. Okay, so, any other questions about that? So we did discuss the Hardwick Gazette, um, so, and at some point in the future, um, one of the things that towns sometimes do is that they designate an official paper of record, which would be some type of publication, newspaper, or whatever, that is kind of the go-to, um, the acknowledged, uh, newspaper that we would post, do any postings in. And, you know, according to the state statute, with this, you know, mix, well, I don't even wanna call it a mix-up, or whatever, the predicament that the Times Argus got us into, if we had a designation with the Hardwick Gazette that that was our official paper of record, and we did send it to them, then, then we would have been free and clear. But, so, um, so we might wanna do that at some point in the future.
So hypothetically, when they, when you guys meet tomorrow, we're gonna have to pay hard decisions and have it put in papers all over again?
I know.
Yep.
Yep. We won't send it to the Times Argus this time.
You definitely wanna do it right, because another one of my seats, I have a person that follows up on this, and it's pretty painful if you don't do it right. There's no remedy other than it just gives you heartburn.
One thing I can say with the Times Argus is that I sent it from our new email addresses, which went into their junk trash folder. Nobody at the Times Argus looked at that folder. Until I called and called, and then I said, I'm gonna want to listen to our old email address.
Okay, so, I know I hardly ever look at my junk folder either.
Because I thought they were gonna take our old email address, that it was gonna automatically pop to our new email address, and that's what would automatically flow to whoever I sent it, not the way it was going to the other.
Okay, do you think we should give them a second chance?
Well, actually, I did with the audit proposal.
Okay, all right.
And I sent the first one out Thursday, I hadn't heard anything today, so I re-sent it to the current email address I had, plus Melody, who actually got the other one into the newspaper.
Yeah, I think if you send it to the Times Argus this time, make sure that they're clear on, you know, maybe some kind of confirmation that they received that, and that it will be, so, maybe, um, just to be safe, um, because the, you know, the planning commission obviously wants this meeting to happen as soon as possible, because we're on a timeline to have the town plan approved. So, I'm wondering if tonight we should think of a newspaper that we would like to, um, consider as the official paper of record, so that we make sure that it goes there too, so if there is a screw-up again, um, we aren't left high and dry having to repay to send those notices out all over again. Obviously, from our conversation before, I feel that using the Hardwick Gazette, um, because it's basically subscription-only online, really isn't, I mean, we, I don't think we should send any of our ads to them anymore, um, so.
But we use News and Citizens, Morrisville Stow, that's just a once-a-week newspaper with the Hardwick Gazette.
Right.
We use The World, which is a once-a-week newspaper, and then the Tom Tatters.
Okay, are the, are the News and Citizen, or The World, are they available as paper copies in, like, downtown Hardwick, or?
Yes.
Okay, but probably not in Montpelier?
Uh, The World, I believe, I'm not sure about News and Citizens.
Okay.
So how does it work with the Tom Tatters? Does that get posted so many days, or just one?
They will get posted for as many times as we ask.
As we ask, yeah, yeah. So the catch this time is, is that they didn't post it enough timely manner, so.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
So it seems like that'd be the more appropriate paper, if, if they can get it posted.
If they can get it posted, the Times Argus. Yeah, is the Times Argus available in, like, Hardwick? Can you pick up a copy?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess maybe we should just, we could designate the Times Argus as our, um, official paper of record, and then just make sure that anytime we send them something, that we get some kind of confirmation.
And when I send it out, I send them a copy of the F that we drew up, and I ask them to send me back proof and pricing.
Okay.
And then I give them the okay to go ahead and put it in the paper.
So I can understand where this might have just been, you did have new email addresses, so it could have, I could see how it could have ended up in the junk file, and knowing how much, I look at my junk file, I can understand why maybe it just sat there for a while.
But the one that I just sent for the audit, I sent on Thursday from the old email address.
Yeah.
And as of today, I still hadn't heard anything, so I then re-sent it to the original email address, plus the Melody, who was the supervisor.
So what I would do is clear up what email address they should anticipate, so that, so that it doesn't.
Because that old email address is never gonna stay around for a certain length of time, right?
They should be basically almost dead. If I, if I use the old one by mistake, I just get the notice that you have a new address.
Yeah, new address, yeah.
So maybe we should hold off till we see how that goes.
Okay, well, what's, what's, do we have a sense of cost for, like, going with the Hardwick Gazette and the Calvary Record as well? Randy can tell you. Or Robin can tell you.
Because I believe we've only got to post in the one paper, as long as we designate the paper.
Yes.
And then we gotta post it here, and we gotta post it at whatever.
Are we kinda doing an experiment right now? To see what kind of response we get? Well, I mean, we've been posting in the four papers that were, that were mentioned for most things, um, and that seems to, I mean, that's all we can really, I mean, we could post in seven days, that's another paper that is, it's a weekly again, but it does get distributed throughout this area, um, so that's another option, we could drop the Gazette and see what it takes to post in seven days.
And I have some of the Calvary Record, I don't know how the five, how they go.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, it's easy to get in town, you can get it in Hardwick.
Can you get it in Hardwick? Okay.
Because when I have this morning, so they're moving the delivery here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr., so, I can pick it up and. I think one thing we need to be aware of is the more places we send it to, uh, the more it costs.
Right, but also the better response we get.
True.
And, there, I mean, we have to remember that there's folks on the other side of, of Woodbury that have a very different response, and very different record than we're gonna get, in terms of their availability.
And who, who are those folks you're thinking of? The Westwoodbury folks?
Westwoodbury folks, yeah, yeah.
And Melody did tell me that this one for the, um, zoning, adder, play again, she needs to cut that price in half from the original cost.
All right, well, that's nice of them.
That's a good thing.
But I don't get that question.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe the Calvary Record is more available over on that side of town?
Well, folks there are pretty much, I think that either Morrisville or Hardwick would be their, you know, where they go, um, that's just a guess on my part, I haven't done it, but that's kind of the two closest towns.
Your question, your gratitude suggests more like Hardwick Gazette or News and Citizens?
Yeah, News and Citizens are good.
For Calvary, it would be more like East Hardwick, Walden, Danville.
Yeah. Times Argus would be south of us, so, yeah.
I don't know, I'm just trying to make sure that we publish things as probably as possible, and if we, and if it costs a little bit more for the town being, maybe it's, maybe it's worth it, to make sure that we're covering our, our whole town. We have a fairly diverse town, so.
Yep.
Chuck.
Got it, yeah, posted every meeting.
Right, yeah, that's another, that's another avenue that we use, yeah.
The libraries work just fine, because nobody's watching.
There's a lot of people that watch that, not, maybe not tonight, but tomorrow or next week or something.
Those are the two traditional town onsite posting sites, yeah. The, that board inside the post office, and at the town, on the porch on the town office, yeah.
Well, I'm talking about this TV here.
Oh, right, there are a lot of people that watch it, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think that they do actual postings, um.
Well, Robin got right up and posted it. In the meeting, Robin said, "What's going on?"
If we had another written up, we could hold it in front of the headblock. Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I agree that, that the town should spend a little bit more in publishing the papers broadly, just to keep people informed, and if it comes to matter of course, the public will come to you and say, we'd like to spend less information, but I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't yet had one person say, you published it too much.
Right, that's true.
There always is a complaint, you didn't do it enough.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Well, maybe I'll give seven days a call, too.
Sounds great to me.
Because that's another avenue, that definitely, um, that's one of the papers I look at.
I was just reading, the website works too, so add it, make sure it's on the website, and then at least two locations in town, physical paper copies.
Yeah, those, those have been posted on the website, um, so. Okay, um, so, on to updates, follow-ups, and other business, the town plan, uh, we did talk about that, and it was pretty much, um, you know, we have this, the initial, I'll call it the initial final draft, has been sent out, um, as per the procedures, steps in the procedure to neighboring towns, and it's available for town residents. We are collecting comments on the town plan. We had, uh, a hearing scheduled for next Monday, the eighteenth, it looks like that will probably be postponed and reworn, reworn, um, and that'll be decided tomorrow evening at a, a planning commission meeting. So, that's where the town plan is at, um, and we've been mentioning a little bit, the auditor RFP, that's, uh, going out, or has gone out. And then the ARPA Project Committee, you mentioned that Chance has some names.
Yeah, so we need to talk to Chance to get his names.
Okay, yeah.
Because he, he's gonna have the name, so we would have to appoint that as a committee.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, I would like to, to see those names, and if we could have them, maybe for, maybe we could appoint them at the next, um.